I have the intention to flag the United States of America and see the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, under the citizen comments portion of our agenda. I don't see anybody has signed in. And is anybody here that would like to comment on anything that's not on our agenda this evening? Seeing no hands, we will move forward. On the consent agenda, are there any of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items that a council member would like to have removed from the consent agenda placed on the regular agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull Resolution 60-16.
Does that have to do with the sewer?
Yes.
Okay. All right, 60-16 will be placed in its regular spot on the regular agenda. Any other items that someone, anyone would like to have removed? I move that we approve the actions for the nine, eight items. Well, now, was it eight or seven?
It's eight.
For the remaining, I'll second.
For the remaining, thanks, Mike.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Second reading ordinance, dash forty-four, dash sixteen, Ann.
Adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen.
Angel?
Good evening, members of council. Staff is requesting approval of the two thousand seventeen operating budget this evening. We had our workshop on November ninth, and staff addressed the one follow-up question that was asked of that meeting. As such, we are requesting approval this evening.
Counsel question? Any discussion? Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-eight, dash sixteen, Ann?
Appropriating a zero point zero zero two acre, more or less, temporary easement for two years from Seventy-two High Company Limited located along North High Street for the public purpose of widening North High Street.
Dana?
Good evening, members of council. As the clerk pointed out in the title, this is about widening North High Street through downtown Dublin. This would allow us to obtain a temporary easement from Seventy-two High Company Limited. Again, this would be, we're in discussions with the landowner, hoping that we can meet amicable agreement on the need for this temporary easement. In the case that cannot happen, this enables the law director's office to file a complaint for appropriation and utilize the quick-take procedures if need be. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions from council? Any discussion? Ann?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-nine, dash sixteen, Ann?
Appropriating a zero point zero zero four acre, more or less, reasonable interest in a zero point zero three two acre temporary easement for two years from Eighty-four High Company Limited located along North High Street for the public purpose of widening North High Street.
Dana?
This is similar to the one that you just voted on, and it also has to do with the temporary easement, but same process. Staff recommends approval.
Questions from council? Any discussion? Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty, dash sixteen, Ann?
Amending the two thousand seven Dublin community plan to incorporate the Shire Rings Road corridor area plan.
Joanne?
Good evening, members of council. Nothing has changed since the last reading, and I was just wondering if you had any questions.
Questions from council? Any discussion? Ann?
Ms. Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Thank you.
First reading ordinance is ordinance, dash fifty-four, dash sixteen.
Amending annual appropriations ordinance for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand sixteen.
Introduce it.
Thanks, Tim. Angel?
Thank you. As is our standard practice here, we are bringing forward what we hope is our final amendment to the two thousand and sixteen appropriations. We have detailed out for you the rationale for all of these amendments. Many have to do with capital construction projects that have been authorized through, mostly through council action over the past couple of months. This is really just a cleanup towards the end of the year. However, I do want to point out that, given that we still have about five weeks left in the year, we've done our best to get what we know now in here. That's not to say over the next two weeks, we might have to amend this at the second reading, just for things that might come up that were unexpected.
So this is housekeeping, basically, year-end housekeeping that we go through every year?
That is correct.
If we have to add some amendments, does it have to go through, would it have to be done on an emergency basis then on the fifth, for the amendments?
No, appropriations, amendments to the appropriations go into effect immediately per the charter.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, there will be a second hearing, or a second reading and a public hearing on the December fifth council meeting. Ordinance fifty-five, dash sixteen, Ann?
Approving, approving Ohio University's framework plan for its Dublin campus.
Introduce it.
Thanks, Tim. Colleen?
Good evening. Fifty-five, sixteen is the next step in our economic development agreement with Ohio University. It is tied to them receiving Sub Area Two from the city, and the requirement was that they had to get their master plan approved by Planning Commission and council no later than December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. It was passed at the last Planning Commission meeting, and now it is your turn. So the university will be here at the next meeting, and I can answer any questions.
Questions from council? This is the plan we've seen a couple of times, right?
It is.
We had a workshop.
Correct.
Okay, there will be a second reading and a public hearing at the December fifth council meeting. Thank you, Colleen. Ordinance fifty-six, dash sixteen, Ann?
This is down as she in appropriations based on the two thousand seventeen operating budget of the city of Dublin, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Introduction.
Introduce it.
Thanks.
Thank you. This ordinance is the actual appropriation based on the two thousand and seventeen operating budget, which you just approved a few moments ago.
Questions from council? Okay, there will be a second reading and a public hearing at the December fifth council meeting. It's going to be a busy meeting. Ordinance fifty-seven, dash sixteen.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement and other necessary documents with the Columbus Metropolitan Library to facilitate building of a parking garage, library, and adjacent streets on the current library site in the historic district.
Dana?
Yes, as Terry gets ready.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks. Thank you. As Terry gets ready to talk about this, I just wanted to point out that we did provide a staff report, speaking to both fifty-seven, sixteen, and fifty-eight, sixteen, one with the Columbus Metropolitan Library, the other one with Dublin City Schools, relative to the site and underlying land and so forth, relative to the site, in order to make way for a new library and associated parking garage and road improvements, which Terry will brief you on.
Thank you. Yeah, before you tonight, we're going to give a combined presentation on both pieces of legislation, because both these agreements are highly interrelated, all flowing from the plans to redevelop the current Dublin branch, the Columbus Metropolitan Library. The graphic that I have shown up on the screen actually identifies a number of the issues here, and I'd like to highlight, this outline in red is the current property as it's owned by the Dublin City School District. It's a site from which the Dublin Cemetery was sold to the city of Dublin a few years back, and over the years, the site that you see outlined here in blue was made available to the Columbus Metropolitan Library for the local branch of that library. That land was provided to the library at no cost from the school, and the school retains certain kind of rights related to that site. That has complicated, obviously, the negotiation as we move forward with a new development concept, and in effect, what these two agreements do, the agreement with the school district, will provide that the city secures the land you see in yellow here, which also includes this little extension of North Street, which is still school district-owned property, for the construction of Franklin Street. And in exchange for that right-of-way and that land, and in addition to the school district releasing its restriction of record on all of that land that you see there, which will be used for roadways, parking garages, and I'll show you some additional graphics in a minute that go into more detail on that, that the school district then gets provided with access and connections to Dublin's fiber optic system to connect all but three of the school district's facilities. So there's a trade there for the real estate and real estate rights that are secured with this in exchange for the fiber connectivity. The Columbus Metropolitan Library site, outlined in red here, about three point four seven acres currently. As we've advanced the planning of this over the last year, this site gets made much smaller in terms of the residual that the library would end up with. About one point one five of that ends up with the Columbus Metropolitan Library. Rest of that real estate gets transferred to the city of Dublin. Biggest piece of that, about one point two five acres, actually, is the site of the future parking garage that will serve not only the library, but serve the historic district. You'll notice that it's slightly tilted. That's tilted because of the sewer easement, these lines that go through along this area. And I'll show you a graphic in the middle. That actually works, and I think, in everyone's favor because of that. The future rock crest alignment, a green space between rock crests and the grounds of remembrance and the scenic easement, and a very small amount, about point oh five acres to the south for the North Street expansion. So all of these agreements with the school district releasing its rights are included in the school district city agreement with regard to the Columbus Metropolitan Library. In effect, what the library has agreed to do is build and construct its new eighteen million dollar-plus library facility on this site, in exchange for which the city will be given the property and develop the parking garage that will serve both them and additional users in historic district, the land for rock crests, additional acreage to the north, and the acreage along North Street. And that's the largest obligations of the parties within that agreement. In addition to that, the agreement, however, does deal with such things as construction. If you'll see the, how crowded this site is for this building, which is probably a forty-two thousand square foot building, likely a four-level parking garage, a new Franklin Street, a new rock crest, and a new North Street, you wouldn't want multiple contractors entertaining that, so the agreement provides for a single Turner Construction contract, kind of a general contract, to have obligations for all of those with whom both the city and the library agree to enter into a contract, so that's all coordinated under one bit of construction control. Those kinds of things, operational aspects, design reviews and approvals going forward are all established within those agreements. There are still some aspects of those agreements that we'll have some fine tuning on that we bring forth you at your next session. We will highlight those for you. We don't think those are substantive in terms of the business nature associated with this. We have, for example, heard that some of the language from council members and others suggests that want to make sure that the city's rights with regard to ultimate design review and approval on its parking garage are its. We'll make sure that language is adequately incorporated into this agreement going forward, and those kind of represent the highlights. One other item here that I want to make you aware of is the, this graphic's somewhat difficult to see, but it makes reference to a series of road improvements that the city undertakes in conjunction with this project. It is this piece of Franklin Street, what we call the northern portion of Franklin Street, from North Street to Rock Crest that gets built as part of this project. That small tilt that I mentioned to you with the sewer line allows us to minimize any kind of impact on the city's leased surface parking lot that's back there. We now have the room because of that sewer easement to pretty much maintain that existing parking lot. We're going to obviously try to keep these things in operation while we can. But it shows the Rock Crest construction, North Street reconstruction, again, with the right-of-way that we get from the city, or get from the school district, and then the planned High Street reconstruction project. Again, you can see the volume of construction activity ongoing. The only road pieces that would be undertaken under a single contract would be these three segments here. The High Street project will be a separately bid project moving forward in early two thousand With that, the administration is recommending that you hold a second hearing and public hearing on this. It's your December fifth meeting, and we would encourage you to take action to approve those ordinances, authorizing the city manager to enter in those agreements, and we'll have some minor revisions for you to consider at your December fifth meeting. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Tim? Thanks, Terry.
Thank you. Terry, in reviewing this development agreement with the library, there are a couple of, there's some language in a couple of sections that concern me. First of all, on page three, section two, paragraph A, and the second half of that paragraph, which discusses how the city will consult with the library with respect to the design of the garage. I guess I want some assurance that we're going to have some independence, the city's going to have some independence in the design of this garage. I know there's language in here that says, "which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld." That, I'm not real comfortable with that language.
No.
I mean, it's not the first time I've seen language like that. We've all seen that kind of language. So that's a concern.
We, I think one thing to keep in mind on this, until the parties are really comfortable with the projects and the designs, they don't move forward. We're not out front at risk building a parking garage or doing streets. All the parties are kind of signing off and are comfortable with the improvements in the projects, and they all move forward simultaneously with this. But we'll make it clear in the modified version that the final design, the budgets associated with the garage are the city's decisions. We'll make sure that's clarified in the agreement.
And that's not to say that, I mean, certainly, you know, we want, we have an interest in it being complimentary to the design, you know, that they propose for the library. I mean, that's not, that's not saying anything else. But, but that's a good segue into page four, section three, under the heading of CML to design and construct the library, paragraphs B and C. The language, the last sentence in that short paragraph B, which states that CML reserves all rights as a political subdivision in the state of Ohio, that also gives me a little bit of concern.
Yeah, there was some initial discussion with some of their advisors, wondering if they were kind of subject to our zoning and development view process, which is why we added provisions in here that you are subject to the city's development view and approval process, and those are acknowledged. So effectively, the city's review and approval of this is as manifested in your zoning and development view process. You'll be the first reviewer and approver of the basic plan, decide if you want to be the reviewer and approver of subsequent plans as well with regard to it. But whatever rights they do have under statute, they have, and that was just a sentence that was put in there to deal with that. We made it clear you're subject, and agreeing to be subject, to our development review regulations, which includes zoning and all the other associated aspects of that process.
And as long as we're comfortable that that doesn't present a conflict.
Yeah, we are.
You know, that they can fall back on and say, "Well, wait a minute, you know, read this sentence," which says that maybe we don't have to fully submit or whatever.
Yeah, our attorney strongly believes they are subject to it anyway.
Great, thank you.
Terry, I know this is in the narrative, but what I'd like to see would be helpful for me, would be just sort of a, some type of a matrix or something that combines the funding sources, so who's paying what?
Sure.
And what that's going to fund. Just something that's simplified and easy to look at altogether.
Yes.
Because, again, I know it's in the narrative, so it's not that you haven't addressed it. It would just be easier for me, and I know this is my ask, but.
Sure. We will do that. If I could, very briefly, in thirty seconds, all of the city's obligations with regard to the parking garage and the roads and the streets are within your already-approved capital improvement plan and are identified as projects within that. On that, I think Dana has brought forth some funding with regard to the fiber, part of which was a grant, and I think we could provide additional clarification on that if needed. And the library stuff is all funded with its bond proceeds that it has approved on there. So those are really the sources of those, but we can lay those out in the matrix.
That would be just helpful, because as I've gotten a couple of questions about where that's coming from, it'd be easy for me to sort of have it almost as a reference.
Absolutely. We'll pull that together.
Question. When is the school district considering this, their portion of this agreement? Or have they already?
My understanding is that Dr. Hoadley has presented this to the board. He does have to check back in with them one more time, and my understanding is he was going to pursue that by the end of the year. The library has one meeting left in, I think, December first.
December first.
And it's my understanding that they too will act on this then, but we'll confirm that. That's our hope, and we keep asking for that.
So this should all be completed by the end of the year?
We hope.
All right, thank you.
The Board of Education did approve the term sheet. It was a predecessor to this back in the spring.
So we're just going to build this little stretch of rock crest? I mean, it's not going to be so low, but.
Correct.
And then?
Yep, and that piece of rock crest will provide a new way in and out beyond North Street.
Yeah, okay.
On that, and will create a whole new urban block around this development.
Thank you.
The, one other thing I should mention, the second phase of a future Franklin Street that would extend to the south would actually require the removal of the Bridge Street Academy Building. The agreement does provide that can't happen for a couple academic years out, and then only really if we're ready to do that street extension at that point in time. So the other nice feature of this land exchange is it does provide for really that full extent of the Franklin Street road extension when and if we're ready to make that.
Paul probably didn't have enough to do anyway, right, Paul?
Does that street extension do anything to residual on either side besides that West Bridge Academy Building? I'm thinking about there's, there's the building immediately to the east or the property.
The J. Lou Restaurant?
Yeah.
It doesn't go onto their property as such. It certainly helps its future developability by providing another, you know, significant access point. Engineering over time will have to determine when and if a signal at Franklin could, could happen on there. My assessment is, overall, it aids in its future developability. It's probably going to crowd that street now in terms of some of the way they've got their parallel parking right along the edge there and such. We do have graphics, we can share those with you, that show in much more, we've done the preliminary engineering, so we know where it's going. I don't know that there's a take associated with it. I believe it largely stays off, but we can verify that for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd like to thank you, Terry, for your leadership, and Dana, for your leadership in this process, you know? Also, thanks to city council staff, Dublin School Board, and Columbus Metropolitan Library Board for working through this process, which you all know, we began well over three years ago, might even be longer ago, and I remember a cold winter day in a goal-setting at OCLC, in fact, where we began the visioning process for this, for this library. It's been a long and difficult process, but it's noteworthy that the city, the schools, the library board, we're all serving similar constituencies, and we ultimately have all come together on this. So thanks to everyone.
And I would echo the commendation of staff for coming up with the idea about the access to Dublin and allowing the schools access. I mean, that's just a brilliant solution. It doesn't cost us really any money, but it benefits everybody. So it was very, thinking outside the box and just brilliant. So, and I would echo Tim's concerns about those two provisions, so I hope that that language can be addressed. Okay, we will have a second reading and public hearing at the December fifth council meeting. Ann, do we still need to introduce ordinance fifty-eight, dash sixteen?
We should just read it and introduce it, right?
Yeah, go ahead. Fifty-eight, dash sixteen.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a real estate and transfer of property agreement, other necessary documents with the Dublin City School District to facilitate the building of a parking garage, library, and adjacent streets on the current library site in the historic district.
Introduce it.
Thanks, Tim. And if there's nothing additional from anybody, we'll just hold that also for a second reading and public hearing at the December fifth council meeting. Okay, looping back to Resolution sixty, dash sixteen, which was removed from the consent agenda. Ann?
This is authorizing the city manager to enter into a reimbursement agreement with Edward A. Polina Construction LLC for a public sanitary sewer extension, seventy-one hundred Avery Road.
I guess I'll introduce it.
Okay. Ann comment? Go ahead. Well, Paul, do you want, does someone want to sort of set this up for us, tee it up?
I mean, I can do a preview of the staff report, or do whatever you like, or answer any questions.
That'd be fine, then we can get to Tim's comment.
This is an opportunity or reimbursement agreement this evening with Polina Construction for seventy-one hundred Avery Road. You may remember back in December of two thousand fifteen, when you adopted the utility extension policy to developed properties within the city, that we had several factors within that policy, and we called them extension prioritization factors, where we looked at how we would possibly extend utilities and develop a fifteen-year conceptual implementation plan, which brought us to this particular property, which is Area fourteen, within that plan. Originally, in that plan, this property and four or three others adjacent to it were planned for sewer extension in two thousand thirty. But just in the last year or so, we've been contacted by Mr. Polina about the interest in building a home. He is a contractor working for a resident who is going to be building this, having this house built. The question became of how to get sewer service to this property, the interest in getting sewer service and getting it sooner than two thousand thirty, and also bringing forward to us, to our attention, the fact that one of the properties within Area fourteen had already gotten sewer service from a different avenue, so it represented a challenge in terms of alignment and wanting to know if the city would partner with him in a sewer extension coming from a different alignment, which was actually west of Avery Road. We thought that made good sense, leveraging private dollars with public dollars to facilitate this sewer extension. The original estimate back in two thousand fifteen for Area fourteen was sixty-seven thousand dollars. With this new alignment, it's, the present cost is just over sixty-eight thousand dollars, and our portion of that would be thirty thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars, with the remainder being funded by the builder. So that's a quick summary.
Thank you, Paul. Tim?
Yeah, I mean, you know, apart from this contribution by the developer, I was just wondering, you know, how this got advanced from two thousand thirty, you know, to two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen.
Quite simply, it's really just leveraging those private dollars and recognizing in the long run, it represented a cost savings to the city, and secondarily, it reduced the possibility of there being a household sewage treatment system placed on this lot, which would be the alternative. And we knew that that would be, was a goal of council to really reduce or to eliminate the potential for the more of those being built within the city.
So for this one lot, we're paying nearly half of what we would otherwise pay to serve three lots.
Correct, but it also sets us up to sell, to serve the other two lots to the south.
For less? For less than we would have otherwise?
Correct. Yeah, because that burden would be on those property owners to pay for that extension, just as Mr. Polina is really paying for the frontage or the sewer extension along his frontage of his property. So our share of it really is just getting it across Avery Road from the west to the east, and majority of that cost is boring underneath Avery Road.
And this parcel in question, it's being provided with the services undeveloped as compared to the other two, which have structures on them?
They have structures currently, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a vacant parcel.
And the property owners have just chosen to not connect at this time?
We contacted, you mean, the two properties to the south? We did contact them, and they had no interest at this time in connecting. I mean, they have functioning systems, I believe, and.
And so remind me what our policy is now that they're within.
That we would not force the connection.
At all, ever?
Correct. That changed with the policy.
Okay.
If they had a system failure, or they, or they applied for a permit to do a reinstall of an, of an onsite system, then they would have to connect at that time.
I could just add one other point. When we were going through the prioritization effort of the various areas, we actually placed several areas towards the end of the implementation timeframe, and those areas had development potential. So the policy and the prioritization effort contemplated this situation. We put those development opportunity areas in the end, and then until such time as a development opportunity came up, which we had in this instance, then we would partner with the developer.
We talked about the possibility of having things occur that would allow us to leverage these dollars. This happens to be one of those when we went through the sewer plan, as I recall.
And I want to thank you, Paul, because I went over this with him, those very issues
that we're discussing publicly, and I think you chose the right course of action, so get this resolved. So, thanks.
You did, this? There was some interest in this?
Yes.
Can you award John? His award is in?
I don't know, I think it's in Tim's award.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so we need to vote on the resolution?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Resolution 61-16, Anne?
Adopting a statement of services for proposed annexation of 47.366 acres, more or less, from Jerome Township, Union County to the city of Dublin.
Dana, introduction?
Oh, did you see it?
Dana?
I'm actually...
Oh, Jennifer.
Good evening. You recall that council previously approved a pre-annexation agreement with the developer of these parcels in August? The petitioner has since filed an annexation petition with the Union County Board of Commissioners, and an annexation hearing is currently scheduled for December 15th at 10:00 a.m. Under Ohio Revised Code Section 709.03, prior to an annexation hearing, the annexing city must adopt a statement indicating what services it will provide to the area upon annexation. Resolution 61-16 outlines the standard services that we will provide to the property upon annexation. We, staff recommends approval of the resolution this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
I'm Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Resolution 62-16?
Supporting the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio's tipping fee rate reduction proposal.
Before we get started, Jennifer, I'd like to ask a question. As Swaco is my former employer, and actually this project was one of my major projects while I was there, I do plan to abstain from the vote. However, I wanted to ask your opinion as to whether I should stay to listen to the conversation or if I need to leave.
Our typical protocol is to leave the dais once you've abstained if there's going to be a hearing on it, so that would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. So you'll, excuse me?
That was the politest please leave I have ever heard.
We need an, um, we need an introduction.
I'll introduce it. Angel?
Thank you. Approval of this resolution this evening would allow myself as part of the Swaco Rate Advisory Board to cast a ballot on behalf of Dublin, supporting the $3 reduction in the tipping fee paid to tip waste at the landfill. I'm pleased to introduce this evening Ty Marsh, who is the Executive Director of Swaco, for a brief discussion on this matter.
Welcome, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Again, my name is Ty Marsh, and I'm the Executive Director of the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio, better known as Swaco. I'm here, again as Angel articulated, to seek your support for a reduction in the tipping fee charged by Swaco when receiving waste of the Franklin County sanitary landfill. The reduction is $3 per ton for a new tipping fee rate of $39.75 per ton. Before explaining the details of the proposal, let me first give you some updated background on Swaco. Our mission is to improve the solid waste stream through reduction, recycling and disposal. What we are now focused on and all about are really seeking to divert as much waste from the waste stream as possible. We do that for three reasons. One is diversion extends the life of landfill itself. We want to make sure that Franklin County citizens and businesses have a landfill that can last as long as possible so that they don't have to worry about future airspace or future place to dispose of their waste. The second reason why we are focused on diversion is it creates economic opportunity. Waste is now of value, and it's an increasing resource. And the question for Swaco is how do we leverage the 1.5 million tons of waste generated in Franklin County per year for greater economic opportunity? The third reason that we're focused on diversion is it enhances the environmental benefits in our community. Less waste means less methane and gas produced. Less waste also means less hauling, which puts a lot of contaminants into the air. Swaco's diversion efforts to divert, our efforts to divert are focused in three areas of the waste stream. The first is before it actually comes to the landfill, and that's where your curbside recycling, our education, our outreach, all of our programs are in play, that we are not only doing but want to enhance. It's also about the infrastructure to collect the recyclables, whether it be roll carts at multifamily dwellings. Even though 95% of all single-family households have curbside recycling, most multifamily places do not. And that's also about businesses. 60% of all waste that comes to the landfill is generated by commercial industrial business. Yet Swaco itself has not had a good education and outreach program to capture that. The second place in the waste stream that we try to divert is once it comes to the landfill. And again, as I stated, the landfill receives up to a million tons of waste per year generated within Franklin County. We just did a study recently that demonstrated that up to 70% of all the waste generated to the landfill could be recycled or repurposed. And if you took that recycled amount and put it on a commodities market, the price of that is $41 million annually. So we are literally and figuratively throwing things away that could be of value. We think also that opportunity is where we can attract industry and create opportunities at the same time. And the third part of the waste stream that we want to make sure that we are doing more diversion is in the waste disposal itself. We're going to be undertaking a waste shed analysis so that we better understand how the waste stream flows in Franklin County, where it originates, where we touch it, where it can be diverted prior to coming to the landfill. To do all this, we need to demonstrate to you that we are a trusted resource and a good steward of public funds. In the past few years, we've had some accomplishments that I'm proud to report. Our employee count, our FTE count, is down by 10%, resulting in a savings of our payroll of over $1 million per year. We've reduced our debt by over $10 million, and we have improved our financial net position from a negative net position to a positive position of $7 million. And just last week, we were pleased to report the recycling rate in Franklin County is now up to 40%, which is a record amount. That's up eight points from a year ago. And even though that's a good sign, it's not, a lot of that is about better reporting so that we're collecting better data, so that we can do better benchmarking. Yet to do all this, we still need a firm and sustainable financial platform for the future, and that leads to the tipping fee, which generates 95% of our revenues. The tipping fee has to change because the restricted fee portion of the tipping fee, a $7 fee, was used to pay off the debt of the old trash burning power plant. That debt is actually going to be paid off next year, and thus the fee has to be restructured. When the Board of Swaco realized that, they pondered other changes that they may want to weigh to the tipping fee, given that we've not had a rate change in over five years. Prior to doing that, we reached out to many communities, townships and villages in Franklin County, including Dublin, for informal conversations. And what we heard back was two major points. In whatever fee that you set, please make it as long a term and sustainable as it can be. Don't decrease the rate one year and then increase it the next. Make it last as long as possible. And the second point that we heard was that most communities would like to see more services, more value from Swaco. So our proposal for a net $3 reduction in the fee reflects that feedback and enables Swaco to move forward in the future. So let me go into the details of the proposal. First you'll see on the screen is your current tipping fee that's currently charged to the Franklin County landfill. Again, the $7 is a restricted fee that had to be paid exclusively to pay off the debt of the waste, old waste-to-energy facility. For Swaco to operate, the $23.75 plus a $2 administrative fee is what we charge to operate and build the landfill. The $5 is a generation fee, which is what we charge, and that's really our programs, our outreach. These are the required activities under the Ohio Revised Code that every solid waste district must do. And then $4.75 goes directly to Ohio EPA to underwrite their operation. The remaining 25%, so Ohio Revised Code allows a solid waste district to levy a $0.25 fee to the community that hosts the landfill, in this case that's Jackson Township. So your total fee for right now is $42.75. What we're proposing is to eliminate the $7, which has to come off, and replace it with a $4 fee, keeping all the other fees as is. Let me go into a little bit more detail about what this $4 replacement fee for go for, and it goes to four primary areas. The first is just our general operation and inflationary pressures that we've been facing over the past five years. The landfill construction is a very expensive proposition. If anybody's been in the construction business, you know how much costs have gone up over the past few years. So what we want to do is use some of this money just to deal with the inflationary pressures that we've faced in the past five years and will face in the future, is to keep us at status quo. The second component of the $4 replacement is to go to increase our cash reserves. We are proud at Swaco that in the past three years, we have built up a rainy day fund from zero to $10 million. However, standards and pours and fit trading services has come out and told us for new guidelines for landfills and solid waste operations, that to maintain a AAA bond rating, the recommended level is 180-day cash on hand, which for Swaco amounts to about $15 million. So we want to use a lot of these funds to get to a minimum level of $15 million in our cash reserves. The third area that this would be used for is in model landfill maintenance. If you're not familiar with model landfill, it's the original Franklin County sanitary landfill that was closed a few decades ago. It's along Interstate 71 down by South 270. It's where the golf course used to be. It's been closed for many years, however, we have to spend nearly $400,000 to $500,000 every year to maintain the gas system and to keep that site in full compliance. So while it doesn't generate any revenue, it has expenses. Previously, we paid for those expenses out of the required, what's called closure fund. Rice Code requires every landfill to have a closure fund so that has enough funds on hand to maintain its full compliance once it's closed. Unfortunately, for model landfill, it's been closed for so long, that closure fund was depleted this year, and so now the $400,000 to $500,000 we have to take out of our operational funds. And again, that's part of what the $4 replacement fee is for. And then last, Swaco wants to provide the additional services and deliver economic and environmental value that many communities are asking for. It will really be an enhancement and expansion of our outreach programs and education, working with our communities, working with businesses to, again, do broader outreach and communication. We're going to be setting composting opportunities. Organics is a major component of what's in the waste stream, yet in Franklin County we have no true composting program initiated. And we also want to be working with Batel in terms of sorting technology. As I mentioned, 70% of what's in the landfill could be recycled or repurposed. The key to capturing that is the sorting of that, and we're working with Batel to help us figure out what are the best ways to do that. So in summary, again, what we are proposing is the taking the $7 off, replacing it with $4, for a net decrease of $3 per ton. Our timeframe for this decision is that we've asked all communities, every community, every township, every village votes on this proposition. We've asked everyone to complete their ballot process by December 1st. Our board will then take up those considerations and those resolutions, and will take final action the first meeting of January on a new rate structure. That rate structure will go into effect April 1st, which is when the $7 fee comes off, because at that time we'll have enough funds to pay it off. I want to thank Angel for her role on the Rate Advisory Committee. That's our formal group that's been looking at this. And even though she had to leave the room, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank Christina's role in this. This was actually her project. She was the champion of pulling all this together. I'm up here giving this presentation, but this was all her work. And she departed us to go back to Ohio State, so it's our loss and their gain. We miss her a lot, but I certainly wanted to thank her for her efforts. And with that, Mayor and council members, I'd urge your adoption of the resolution and be glad to answer any questions or provide further clarification.
What, what is the total value of the $4? I don't, did you, I don't know if I missed that in the earlier part of the presentation?
It's a, it's a simple, it's an easy equation. It would equate to approximately $4 million. We take in a million tons per year, so it's, it makes the math pretty easy.
So it's about 4 million? And then I guess I got questions on the green recycling, like what, I visited the recycling in Portland, and it's a very advanced facility with asphalt and meters and very, very interesting programs. And the one you're thinking about, can you give us any information on it at all?
I would, before answering that specifically, we do not have a specific plan for how we're going to do that. I think Swaco in the past has had a history, a spotty history of investing in major projects, multimillion dollar projects that then fail and there's loss. We are going to do much more due diligence, and that's part of why we're working with Batel, to help us figure out what is the best technology that we should proactively be seeking that can help sort from that waste stream as opposed to reacting to proposals that come into the door. So that's going to be due diligence for a while before we really come up with what's a viable economic option that works on a Midwestern model for the characteristics that are in the waste stream for Franklin County. Having said that, though, our focus over the next few years is going to be more on baseline education and outreach. Next year, we're going to be doing a district-wide education campaign to help people better understand just exactly what they recycle, how they do it. That will lead into a why we're doing it, because these are pocketbook issues as much as environmental. But for a project for the sort, we do not have that figured out yet.
Yeah, I was going to say if, and that's one of the reasons I was curious about how much money's returned, like if it's $4 million, it's not a huge amount of money to run a series of green recycling centers anywhere around this area or even at your area.
It's not, council member, we feel we've got some more due diligence to do. We think that's going to take us a few years. And currently, on model landfill, we're going to be exploring ways to generate money so that we can offset that expense, which would give us some additional expense. We're also utilizing our cash to pay down our debt or finance with cash rather than increasing more debt. Our debt rate, even though we've reduced it by $10 million, is still high relative to other public landfills in the United States. So we still have some, some work to do before we get into the realm of the larger scale activities. But we do feel that there is real opportunity in the education efforts, working with businesses, providing more studies to see what we could do in the way of composting in the organics field, as well as in just the sort technology itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Appreciate you coming in. Anne?
I'm Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Okay, staff comments. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. And before I jump into a couple of comments, I just want to acknowledge and thank Ty Marsh for his leadership at the Solid Waste Authority. We've had a longstanding, great partnership with the Solid Waste Authority, and I know that Ty and his staff, including Christina, had a, had big challenges on their plate when they took this agency over and have done a great job. And, you know, this landfill, I don't know sometimes if we really appreciate what a great resource it is. To have a publicly owned landfill that we use is as critical as infrastructure like water, sewer, roads, broadband and the like. And I think that owning our own landfill and managing it appropriately along with the waste stream tie saves us a whole lot of money. That tipping fee, I remember years ago, we did analysis on that. That tipping fee would be much, much higher if we didn't own and control our own landfill. So it is a very unusual and precious resource to have. Appreciate your leadership and how you, how you manage that. Just a couple of comments regarding info that was in your packet. I just want to remind more so the public, but because you all had access to it and it's on our website, that there is a Sawmill Road-Bright Road Corridor Study Public Meeting that'll be held Tuesday, November 29th. There's a presentation at 6:15 and 7:15. That'll be at Dublin-Soda High School, and we invite the public to come out for that. Staff will do a couple of presentations there and invite public input and feedback regarding that study. And then the Christmas tree lighting will be Thursday, December 1st, from 5:30 to 7:00, with the lighting actually occurring at 6:30, and that's all I have. Thank you.
No other staff comments? Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Committee reports, P and Z. Amy?
I don't really have anything to share. Thank you.
Administrative committee, Mike?
I know we're working on goal setting. We've got our meeting set date, dates are set, correct?
They are. I can't remember what they are offhand.
I know Michelle's working on facilitators right now. We'll come to that conclusion here over the next 30 days, hopefully.
Yes.
February 2nd and 3rd.
Say that again?
February 2nd and 3rd.
Correct. And the facilitator piece, we need to get, we need to bring to conclusion before the end of the year.
And, and that, as well as offering up some topics for consideration, we're working at staff level probably by mid-December, and you can think about those over your break and then, you know, pick up those topics in early January in terms of an agenda and how you want that to look going into the, into the retreat.
in early January in terms of an agenda and how you want that to look going into the retreat.
You're going to throw some ideas out. We're going to then share those with council and receive their ideas and then kind of try and put that agenda together at that juncture.
Right.
And then, in terms of evaluations, you're working -- we've gone through a process. You understand what we're looking for. I'll try and articulate that at the next meeting at Administrative Committee Report time.
Okay.
Just to reiterate so we're all on the same page. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Community Development Committee, John?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Back to you, Mike. Finance?
Nothing.
Christina, Dublin Irish -- Dublin Friendship Association?
We had a great meeting. Was it a week ago? We talked a lot about your interactions with the Lord Mayor of Dublin, Ireland, and how we really want to continue to explore the conversations that were started during that meeting, including their interest in economic development and how Dublin manages economic development. So we have a subcommittee that will be talking. The subcommittee is really about potential relationships down the road. But for this year, especially leading up to the Dublin Irish Festival's 30th anniversary, we'll be focusing on our relationship with Dublin, Ireland, as well as continuing to keep in the periphery some thoughts on potential other cities that we might want to reach out to in the future. But we're very excited for that relationship. So we'll be putting together some plans over the coming couple of months, this particular subcommittee, on which Scott and -- Scott Drang and Jenny Amro are with me. So I'll be really excited probably next -- well, it might be January before we really have a good solid plan together. But we're working on that agenda, and so there'll be more information to come on that. But it was really a very productive meeting. We also decided that it probably was not in our best interest to join a friendship association, official friendship association. We reached out to some other cities that had joined them in the past, and they felt like, in the beginning, as they were setting up their association, it was somewhat helpful because it gave them some resources. But many of those resources are available online. So we didn't feel that it was really worth the, I don't know, a few hundred dollars a year to join these when you can get most of the information that you want online. So we decided to put that to bed and not bother with it. The -- I believe the Japanese Friendship Subcommittee within that group will be meeting shortly as well to work on some of the continued relationship and upcoming events that we have with Mashaco. So that'll be exciting as well. So more to come. There'll be a more detailed plan pulled together for the rest of council to take a look at, hopefully, in January.
Great. Thank you. Public Services Committee, Amy?
We have nothing. Thank you.
Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Tim?
We had a meeting last week that Dana attended and Megan attended. I don't remember anything of really high significance. I think it was pretty much business as usual, kind of closing out the year's business.
Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission?
They held their 49th annual meeting. As you can see from the program that I asked Anne and her staff to place it -- put at everyone's place this evening, it shows the program for that meeting. This event was also attended by Vince Pepzidero and Paul Hammersmith. We were in Urbana in Champagne County. And then, I've also included at your place an annual report where you can see what the LUC Regional Planning Commission worked on in this last year, and included therein is a reference to the Crossroads Area Plan, which, of course, we're all familiar with.
U.S. 33 Innovation Quarter?
We did not have a November meeting. Thank you.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Yeah, I just want to say they had a -- their second-largest fundraiser after the Garden Party, and I think Mike will agree, it was really a wonderful night, really, really well-attended, and everybody had a great time, great food, great drinks. They have opened up a -- with a new -- an artist who's a ceramicist, who's almost a national treasurer in Japan because of his high skill level, and I encourage everyone to stop out and see that exhibit. And by the way, his art is for sale if anyone's interested. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Dublin Board of Education, Christina?
We have not met since our last meeting.
And Washington Township. I see Sarah. Sarah, welcome. Anything you want to instill upon our knowledge? Nothing? Okay. I have nothing else to report. Council Roundtable. Christina?
I've said all I have to say already.
Okay. Mike?
Me too.
Amy?
I have a couple of questions. One, I'm wondering how or if we might get a report or an update from code enforcement on the waste can screening effort just in our next packet is fine. And the other thing, gosh, it's been probably nine months. We talked about our office buildings and the fact that we have the large signs in front of the office buildings advertising vacancies, even when none exists, they sort of perpetually appear, and we talked about them and potential -- the potential of them disappearing, and I'd just like to revisit that again. We don't have to tonight, but the other thing, I wanted to invite my fellow council members who are not electronic to reflect on the fact that I have just this iPad and you have 246 pieces of paper in your info-only packet alone. Looking at this 190-page finance.
Don't let him hear about that.
190 -- it'll all be recycled, but still. The Munis Software Financial Report, which, of course, is intriguing, but that's a lot of paper, so I'm not saying -- I'm just saying, but New Year's resolution time is coming, and this is really the best -- this is all I have to take home. Thank you.
Well, now, to be fair to poor Angel, it's a new system, and these are sort of the big, giant, massive reports that she has assured me, as we go through the next sort of fiscal cycle, that they will be able to pull those up into sort of better-looking, more easily digestible reports that hopefully will be like not even a tenth that long. Doesn't negate the non-paper thing. I totally agree with you.
I enjoyed every single page of it, but my point is it's electronic, not actual paper.
Christina, her comments are directed at a few of us, not you.
I'm not saying. I'm just saying.
35 years' worth of paper, it's hard to give it up.
But we do love trees, Christina. We're just willing to sacrifice them for this meeting.
Anything else, Amy?
That's all I have.
Tim?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
I just had two quick things. We had the Dublin Irish Festival Annual Meeting on, I believe it was the night of the Arts Council event, but congratulations to next year's honorary chair was introduced as Kitty Munger. She's going to be the 30th year of the Irish Festival, and Dana's got some great ideas about the meetings of the Dublins, and it's going to be a very, very exciting year. Tim, I know you brought that back with you from Ireland, so that's exciting. And then, Christine and I attended the graduation from the Community Police Academy. Chief, I think this is the fifth class, number five. Really great group of people, really dedicated, takes a lot of time, a lot of commitment, and I commend you for offering that opportunity. It's a fantastic thing. Like I told that group, the chief is not just protecting our community, but he's helped developing our community. So thank you, Chief, for all of your efforts.
So can I just piggyback off of that?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I should have mentioned earlier. So thanks to Chief, and thanks to, in particular, Sergeant Renee Rice, who really runs the program. It's really sort of her baby. My husband was fortunate enough to be in class number five, so we dragged all five of our kids to the dinner, and so I appreciate that you were there. But it was a lot of fun. I did go to one session, and I cannot tell you how dedicated the folks who go and attend this really are. They're fabulous. And, you know, one of the things that they asked us to do is to really promote both the Citizen Police Academy and Citizen U as well. So I just feel like it deserves a special mention. And the information is on the website, and there's a great video where they did the mannequin challenge. Go watch it. It's really, really cool. I really enjoyed it. So thanks for indulging me.
Anything else, then we stand adjourned.